Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and it's time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for June 18th, 2019. We'll begin this meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight will be by Councilman Alexander and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Love. If you stand with me, please.
Let it in your heart, pray. Father God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for this beautiful rainy day. We thank you for this city and what it stands for. And I pray of God that you bless each one of these council persons as such blessing they stand in need of and that everything we say and do tonight will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name we do pray and in your heart say.
Amen.
Place the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited to in just a small.
I'll ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Phan.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next item is the approval of the minutes. This evening you have the minutes from the May 21st, 2019, City Council meeting and the June 4th, City Council meeting.
For both.
Have a motion to approve both by Councilman Overton.
Second.
A second by Councilwoman Love. Are there any additions or corrections?
They're all asleep.
Seeing none, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The minutes are approved. We now have public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone can come forward and address an item that is on the evening's agenda. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address, and then you may speak for up to five minutes on the topic that's on the evening's agenda. We will also have public comment at the end of the meeting for items that are not on the agenda, so you'll have an opportunity at that time as well. So right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open and there's someone at the podium.
Hello, my name is Tisha Borders. My address is 2570 Highway 31E, Gallatin. I'm...
My name's Johnny Griffin, 657 Northwater Avenue, and this is my daughter. She has joined me on the project to hope to restore Randy's Record Shop.
Right, I'm actually the president of the Foundation for Randy's and just wanted to come in and kind of give everyone an update. I actually took an active role in the project, probably in the spring, around March, and really spent the last few months kind of diving in to see, you know, what had happened with the project, the contacts, the challenges, and that sort of thing. Few things that we have accomplished, we do have a website, we've also got a brochure, which he is now handing out with some other letters as well. The biggest thing that we've done recently is obviously filed for 501(c)(3), and that has been our biggest challenge as far as getting donations. Everyone really wants, you know, even though we're a nonprofit, they really want that official nonprofit, uh, excuse me, 501(c)(3). So that's kind of been our biggest hang-up. I think honestly, you know, what we're asking for is additional time, and I understand the concern of the council is the safety of the building, and I certainly understand that, but we need additional time to, you know, get the funds necessary to secure the building. You know, we're hoping we can work something out, maybe with the owners, to facilitate that, and, you know, I guess what I'm asking you is if we came back with letters of intent, could we get an extension on the project as far as for donations? And if we...
We'll be discussing that at a later point in this evening's meeting, and at that point, we may have some more, ask you to come back for some more dialogue.
Okay.
But during the public comment portion of the meeting, we ask people just to comment.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Just wanted to go over what I have in here. It's actually a copy from the county, which is the resolution, you know, stating the importance of the structure of Randy's, as well as an email from Pat Boone and also a letter from NTSU. And you may have already seen these documents, but I just wanted to present those to you again. So, you know, I feel that this is a worthwhile project and it's a challenging project. You know, it wouldn't be easy if it wasn't, you know, it's just worthwhile and we really would like the support of the city and try to make this happen, not only to honor Randy, but also we feel that it's beneficial for the city to have this building.
I've been working on this project now for about a year. It has been 10 times harder than I ever thought it would be, but I'm not going to give up because I know what it means to the city of Gallatin for this to be restored. I was in Bowling Green, Kentucky, at a car show over the weekend. Two guys sat next to me that I had never seen before. I gave them two of my business cards. Soon as they saw Gallatin, Tennessee on it, the first thing they asked me, Randy's Record Shop. This is known worldwide, and the city of Gallatin is very fortunate to have this opportunity, to have this building here. It will be a tremendous asset to the city of Gallatin if we can restore this building. You know, I know up at the museum, they're going to have a Randy Wood exhibit. We have had people from Lawrence Welk's son agreed to let us display material. Mickey Nobles, Jean Nobles was her father. He is the one that talked Randy Wood into advertising on the radio. She has all his desk and everything from when he was on the radio. She's agreed to loan that where we can display it. I've had several people wanting to do that, and you know, I could just do so much. You know, I need help on this. This is the first time in my life that I have ever tried this, and I gained nothing in this. I've worked on it for a year. If you go down there now, there's a sign that says, "Save and Restore Randy's Record Shop." I paid for that. You know, I grew up here in this town, and I know what Randy's Record Shop means to Gallatin and to the world, and it would be a travesty for it to be torn down. And I know the building's in bad shape, but the building was in bad shape when I got started on this. I wish it would have been in great shape, but I had to go with what I had. And all I ask is, you know, if you can help, help us do this. And the city's the one that's going to gain on this. It's going to bring in tax dollars, you know. I don't know any city that doesn't need, you know, money. And, you know, it's going to be an asset to the city of Gallatin, but we need help and we appreciate... The council has been more, you know, to help us. I appreciate everything y'all have done, but I realize there's just so much you can do. But thank you, and we'll wait around if you have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to talk about the first thing on the agenda, the Newman property.
Sure, name and address.
My name is Jeff Hollins. I am at 904B Lower Station Camp Creek Road. May be the furthest person from downtown. When we own that farm there, I've got 175 acres down there. I want to, I want to talk about that, what they're doing, and just to make comments, I'm not against it. Let's see here. My biggest concern is with the drainage, okay? I don't, I don't want the retention ponds to dump on the surface their outlet on top of, right, directly at a fence of mine, two of them, which comes across a field. It should be routed directly to the drain branch that's there right now, or pipe to it, you know, because right now, it's like, here's these headwalls looking at me like that. Now, the reason I would notice that so much is that when we built Big Station Camp, the big road, they turned it into like, it's like, it acts like a dam. So about a half a mile of the water on Big Station Camp going off the hill comes down to 148-inch drainpipe. It should have been about three or four, five drains across the row, but it all came to one. Well, this one, Mr. Rainey planned to dump in my field like this and ended up getting turned into a ditch. And right now, that ditch is about eight foot deep. It's washed real bad, eroded. It goes along my fence line and you can go in the ditch and look up and see the bottom of the fence post hanging down. So now it's the Gallatin. I know you, I know you'd say that that's a Sumner County project, but it is what it is. Now, and I would, I would say, me as a landowner, that if, when I get ready to develop or whatever, that that, that damage that Big Station Camp done to me, I can't imagine putting in 650-foot of 48-inch concrete pipe costing less than $100,000. So this makes me real skittish. Now, I wanted to make sure that the guys know that I haven't talked to the designer and they, and they met me as we come in and seemed like they were very willing to do it, and I mean, and my main goal is them headwalls not to be looking at me, even if we have to go to the trouble of going underground across me or something, you know? But it's, it kind of, I don't, I don't, they, they built that little four-acre subdivision there and it's got little roads, and I'd like to see them tie it into their stuff and the, and the drainpipes hooked together like the, you know, into that subdivision like they ought to be. So the retention pond, it's, it's all about the outlet. And they said, "Well, that's, you know, we can, if we can work that out, I'm good with it," you know? So that's my goal, is not to get that across there. And I wanted to make sure that you understood my spirit. I'm not a good speaker. Now, the reason it bothers, you know, I know a little bit about what I'm talking about. Of course, I'm a mechanical engineer. Some of you know that I worked TV for 39 years and I was the engineer manager of the power plant. So, I mean, I'm speaking as an engineer myself about how this works, and I've looked at the, I've looked at the topos of it and even the, even where I think that the retention ponds ought to go to are kind of showed up pretty, pretty, like a little arrow on the, on the topo, so I'm not really, that doesn't bother me either. Let's see. When you look at their design, I kind of would like to see the store and the commercial part kind of kept separate. I'll talk to them in detail. There's some parts about the way we can do it that would make me a lot happier about it. So that's the only thing, those headwalls are the things I cannot deal with because of what it's already done to me before, and I don't want to have to, I mean, it's like, if I did the exact same development next door to them, you know, if they were to, if I were to just keep going, it would be like I'd have my row of houses with these giant headwalls looking at my back door 30 feet away, and I'm like, what am I supposed to do with them? And that's, that's what I'm saying, what am I supposed to do with them? Because I'm not going to live forever and it will be developed someday, you know? That's the way it goes. The second thing I wanted to talk about just a little bit was the setback, and this is kind of get on the record. Stone Creek's next door to me, so I've got, you know, 20 or 30 neighbors on that fence line, and some of them are real, real friendly about it, and some of them think that I'm supposed to provide them a service of trimming their trees. The fence-lined trees is whoever they're landing on. If they don't like the tree, if they think it's dangerous, they can pay for cutting it down. Us on a farm, your neighbor and you had a fence, the fence, the trees grew up, and you don't go out there and cut on them. It's, it's dangerous. You let them fall and then you cut them up and then you fix your fence. I mean, that's kind of the way things are, and to think that we've got the money as a farmer to cut, to call somebody out for $2,000 to work on one tree of 200 down a fence line, I mean, it's kind of, you know, so I want these, I want to make sure that when they build these houses, that there's enough space for the trees to fall, or they understand that if they want to cut them all right now, that's fine with me, but they got to put a new fence back up. But I mean, that, we, I can't be dealing with the trees for this subdivision. It shouldn't cost me to deal with those trees. And the little thing, but, you know, it is what it is when it comes to those, to that, because I don't intend, my, my insurance agent told me, "Don't touch them," because you'd be liable if you're out there cutting on a tree and it hits their house. The other thing is about roads and connections. You know, I'm sitting there with that much property and I'd like to be more involved in what goes on out there. Now, I know they've got planning groups for all kinds of areas, but, you know, not everybody owns the property out there, you know? And so my example is, I've got, I've got four and a half acres across the creek that's completely landlocked now because Syntec built the subdivision, Crutcher Station built the subdivision, and nobody gave me a road into me, and then the Hollins family, we gave a half a mile of right-of-way to the Greenway.
Mr. Hollins, I'm going to interrupt you for just a minute. Your five minutes is up, but with no objection by this council, shall we let him continue?
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know it was going so long.
You're, and you're doing a beautiful job speaking, so.
Anyway, we gave a half mile of the Greenway. Matter of fact, the bridge is even named after my sister. And, but when they built it, they filled in my road across the creek and, and, you know, that was it. So I'm kind of locked out of there and I'm so, in one place, I paid, like I said, I paid a million dollars for this little 25 acres that we're talking about, this drainpipe going across. Well, I've got six acres across the creek that one guy offered me $8,000 for, out there where we're talking about. So, you know, I want my right-of-way there, but that's not y'all's responsibility, that's the counties, and that's, you know, I'm going to have to, I don't know what I'm going to do eventually, but I mean, that land's sitting there. So in conclusion, you know, I want to be involved some if there's any way that, whenever anything like this, because luckily, they sent me the letter and I picked it up to know that this hearing was even going on about it, because I thought, well, I don't care if they approve this to build more houses, I just didn't know they were going to get to the details of the drainage. So if you don't mind, I'll try to work with them and we'll see if we can work it out. If, my, my main goal is to not have that water dumped on the surface across my fields. After that, I'm probably good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on public recognition on agenda-related items this evening? Seeing no one, I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed and proceed now to mayor's comments. I will begin by explaining to the public why I am wearing a t-shirt. It says, it says, "What's your idea?" That's because the Planned Gallatin Lawn Party, which has now moved indoors, is happening right now downstairs at City Hall in our lobby. It will be going on until 7:00 PM, and we invite the public to come out and share your ideas about the city of Gallatin. We also encourage you to bring your children because we're actually planning their future. So come on out, we've still got some popcorn, we've got snowballs from Petite Pearl, and it's a good opportunity to come out, share your observations, your suggestions, your ideas, and certainly your criticism as well, because your criticism helps us do better. So come on out, that happens until 7:00 o'clock, and we've had a great crowd, so that's the really good news about that. I think everybody was very surprised at the attendance we've had, and it's a good thing, and we're excited about the future plans for Gallatin. I'm going to share some events coming up, things that you'll want to know about. Third Thursday happens this Thursday, the parks are kicking off the first one this year. It's at 6:30 on the Historic Downtown Square. This Saturday at the Farmer's Market, they're having B-Day from 10:00 AM until noon. The Car Cruising is happening again at City Hall this Saturday evening. And then we're going to go into some district meetings for Planned Gallatin, and our council members will be hosting, hosting Planned Gallatin District Meetings. The first one is actually coming up on the 26th, which is a week from tomorrow night, and that's going to be Planned Gallatin with Councilman Hayes, and it's happening at the American Job Center from 5:00 PM until 7:00 PM. On the 27th, there's going to be Planned Gallatin with Councilman Overton, and that's happening at Gallatin High School from 5:00 until 7:00 PM. And then on the 29th, and we will have more Planned Gallatin with the districts coming up, and we'll announce those when we have our next meeting, but on the 29th of June, we are having a celebration for the opening of our fire station number five. It's going to be, the opening ceremonies are going to be from 10 until about 10:30, and open house will continue until about noon. You should go out and check out the new beautiful fire hall that has just opened. And then finally, I will mention that on the 4th of July, we're having our annual 4th of July celebration at Triple Creek Park, starts about 2:00 PM, goes until after fireworks, usually about 9:30. Fireworks usually happen at 9:00. Great opportunity to celebrate, a very important day in our country with your friends and neighbors. So those are the events that I wanted to share with you all. Certainly want to extend thanks this evening to the staff with the city of Gallatin who have worked on the Planned Gallatin effort. A lot of them are not in this room right now because they're still downstairs, but a lot of department heads, a lot of staff, a lot of volunteers, and our partners at GNRC have done a lot of work to make this be a successful venture, and so we want to give a nod to them as well. That would conclude my comments this evening. I will proceed now to the regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is second reading on ordinance 01905-26, and Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning 0.03 acre parcel from the agricultural residential district to the mixed-use district and appropriate, and approving an amended preliminary master development plan for Newman's Crossing on 23.12 acres located south of Long Hollow Pike and west of Big Station Camp Boulevard. Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander. That opens the floor for discussion.
I do.
Go ahead.
One minute, we going to discuss?
Oh, I thought, I thought you were saying you wanted to say something, though.
No, I was going, I was going to get the developer, somebody, the developer, just ask him a question.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be fine. I was going to ask someone with our staff to ask Mr. McCord to come back in the room for just a minute. He's outside helping someone right, oh, he is?
I saw him go up.
Oh, I know, I know he's up here, he's helping someone, and if somebody could just let him know that there's an item we may have questions for. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we don't have any questions for him. We just, I just want to talk to, I just want to ask Mike a question about the drainage that Mr. Hollins was talking about.
Yes.
Are y'all okay with working with him on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
At this level, it's diagrammatical, and so there's some, we'll be working, obviously, with staff. There's a way, we'll work together. We told Mr. Hollins we'd do that and we'd meet him on the property and...
Okay.
And he even agreed to, to call, share some pipe across his property if that has to be, so we'll work that out.
Okay, that's the only thing I had.
What about the setback in the trees? Can you work some kind of deal there?
Yeah, I got a Google image. There's only a few trees that are involved. I mean, it's very scattered, so we don't see an issue with that.
Okay. And this is the preliminary master development plan, and so there will be a final master development plan.
That's right.
And so realize that that's important to this council to make sure that the adjoining property owner is satisfied.
Sure. We'll do our best. Appreciate it. All right, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, thank you. Seeing no one wishing to further discuss, all in favor of second reading on ordinance 01905-26, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number two is second reading on ordinance 01906-29. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading on orders number 01906-29, so this is appropriating federal grant to Police Department for mental health training, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01906-29. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. And the public should be very excited that our Gallatin Police Department was successful in the attainment of that grant. It's almost a $100,000 grant for mental health assistance in our community, so that's very good. Item number three is second reading on ordinance 01906-30. Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is orders appropriating $376,175 for 2019 year-end budget adjustments. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 01906-30. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. Item four is the first reading on ordinance 01906-31. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance awarding the bid and authorizing funds in a total amount of $3,600,000 for water sewer reserves in 2019, sewer rehabilitation in various areas of the city. Contract number 119, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01906-31. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item five is resolution R1905-25. Councilman Phan.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution creating a new personnel rule relating to personal relationships. I so move.
Mike, your mic. Sure, so people at home can hear.
Here we go. Resolution creating a new personnel rule relating to personal relationships. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Phan, a second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? This is resolution R1905-25. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item six is resolution R1906-27. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to revise the employee pay plans. I so move.
Okay, have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Phan, and again, for the public's information, this is the resolution where the employee, where all of the employees within the city have the 1.5% cost of living adjustment added. It also includes the new positions for this coming year. So just for your information, any further discussion? This is resolution R1906-27. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item seven is resolution R1906-28. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution supporting a notice of intent to file an application for a multimodal access grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the development of multimodal improvements in the city. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Alexander. Mr. McCord does have some new information regarding this. We discussed it last week, but as he delved into it, he learned some things that kind of changed the scope, and he wants to share that information with you.
Yeah, we got notice kind of late on this and we did present it to you last week at the council committee meeting. The, this grant is multimodal by DOT. It's not a TAP grant, which we've received as well from the MPO, which is a little more lucrative in the sense that we would be able to apply it to local streets. The DOT, TDOT grant, is limited to state highways within the city. Now, we did get a TDOT grant, just like this one, to do the sidewalk from Greenway Drive to Lock 4 Road along the south side of Nashville Pike, and that one's moving forward. So I just wanted to, I sent y'all an email last week in explaining that situation. So what we need to do, if you're inclined to approve this resolution, is that we need to select a section of state roadway where we would like to see the sidewalk. And as we mentioned last week, that segment of, we thought would be low-hanging fruit is that segment of highway, Nashville Pike in front of the college would be a project that we think would be worthwhile. In the city, just last year, earlier this year, actually, built a segment of sidewalk along Gap Road, which is, serves not only the Gap, but the college and comes up to Nashville Pike. So this would actually be a project that would not just be a sidewalk, it would be a multimodal trail, and it's part of our Greenway system that's on our long-range plan that would extend from the west side of town to the east side. So I talked with Nick about this, and he's in support of this project, and essentially what you'd be getting is an extra wide sidewalk on the north side of Nashville Pike from Greensboro Drive to about the Ford Place, if you selected that.
Bill, I know y'all don't have exact cost, but about what's it going to cost to do that and the city's part as well?
Yeah, we would be limited, so depending on, because we haven't done any engineering work, obviously, on it. We'd be limited to a $1 million project. The city's share is only 5%, which is very nice. Being all on state right-of-way and only having to deal with the one agency, which is a state agency, would make it much easier to acquire right-of-way from the state or an easement, in this case most likely, than it would to be to deal with a multiple property owner. So we don't know exactly the cost of it, we'll have to do a little more work. We're hoping that we can do the whole stretch that I described earlier for the $1 million, but as you've seen with these, a lot of these projects, the costs escalate, even over the course of a year, they can go up 20%, so.
But with the right-of-way, that should be helpful. What's the deadline on this?
We have to send in a notice by next week to DOT, and then we have, I think they'll give us a couple of months to actually get the application to them. It, it's a competitive process, so when we send in the prospectus or the abstract to them, they will evaluate those abstracts in competition with all the other people who are submitting abstracts.
I make a motion that we, I make a motion we move the resolution forward, that we I make a motion that we, I make a motion we move the resolution forward, that we approve the resolution to support a notice.
We already have a resolution and a second, so I guess if.
On the Nashville Pike property, you're gonna put it that way?
I guess if we specify that. You want to amend it to specify that? That would be proper.
Yes.
Okay, amendment to specify that Vosk State property. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on that proposed amendment? Then let's vote on that. All in favor of the amendment, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously, taking us back to the original motion. Any further discussion on that? Okay, this is resolution R1906-28. As amended, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Passed unanimously. Thank you so much, Mr. McCord. Item number eight is dangerous buildings. Dangerous building at 321 West Main Street, Randy's Record Shop. And for this, we'll have Mr. Chuck Stewart, our building official, and Susan Heimacalli, our city attorney. I'll turn it over to you all.
Good evening, thank you. The only thing I can add over what I've said in the past about this building, it's still a dangerous building, is that I got my hands on the asbestos report and forwarded it to the attorney's office. And I don't have anything else on it, counsel.
Mr. Stewart, have the bill deteriorated anymore? Or pretty much the same?
From visually looking at the building, from passing by, not going up close on time, it looks like that we have more block and more deterioration going on. You expect that with the weather, when there's no protection for the mortar joints on the stack, because there's no roof there. What's going inside the building, we can't tell you that. I'm not an engineer, don't profess to be. So, it takes someone to, an engineer to tell you how much more deterioration's happened on the building. It's not getting any better, let's put it that way, you know?
So, basically, at this point, this council needs to make a determination as to what your next steps are going to be.
Would you articulate the options?
Well, it's already been deemed a dangerous building, and we have given several extensions. So, Mr. Stewart, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is to move on with demo of that building. And if I'm correct on the state rules, if no one can go in and remove the asbestos from the site, then the whole site would have to be moved to an asbestos dump site.
So, the options at this point would be to accept Mr. Stewart's recommendation and move forward with demolition, or whatever other options this council wants to give.
When we say move forward with demolition, to be clear, that is giving notice to the property owner that they have X number of days to demolish the building, at which point, if it weren't done, then it would be the city's responsibility.
That's correct.
Yeah, it would be to issue an order to the owner of the building.
Counsel, discussion, questions, your will?
Can you explain that asbestos removal again? When you tear down the building, you have to move it somewhere else, or is that what you said?
State EPA rules, state rules, if you have asbestos on a site, an asbestos team comes in, removes all the asbestos, and disposes of it at a dump site. To go in and get the asbestos out of this building, what we're being told is, you cannot. So, you'd have to take the whole building and transport it to an asbestos site.
Seems like we don't have much choice, then.
Are you just talking about the Randy's Record Shop, or you talking about that whole strip of buildings?
Don't know anything about the rest of those buildings. Only thing we know about is Randy's Record Shops, though. We're not included from that wall on. Now, assuming same timeframe, same build, you'd have to have a survey come in. But those buildings are not in the condition that Randy's building was in, okay? There's still, seem to be solid walls there where a team could come in. If there's asbestos removal, they could remove it.
I think it would be appropriate to ask if a property owner representative would like to say anything.
Say that again.
I said, I think it would be appropriate to ask if a representative of the property owner would like to enter into the conversation.
Well, I was sitting here thinking, wondering where that dump is for asbestos, I wonder how far it is, and what it's gonna cost.
Is your mic on? Yes, it's on.
Yeah, it's on now. To answer your question on that, Mr. Fan, the way I understand it, the closest one's in Livingston, Tennessee. Livingston? Is that the same one that the state does for underground storage sites? I'm familiar with that. I don't know that I have a recommendation. I think the only issue that I see here, and I'm gonna abstain on the vote, is that, do we want to give them more time to come up with whatever monies they can, and see if they're gonna be able to do it? And if they're not, we don't have any option. And it'd be up to this council to decide if they want to extend that time or not.
Well, I, I'm sorry. I, I think I'm speaking for this council, and correct me if I'm not, that there is some frustration, because we've not yet seen evidence of any committed funds, and a 501(c)(3) has yet to be formed, which they keep saying it takes time. And, I mean, I've started a few of them, and it takes an hour. And so, I don't know where that disconnect is. I understand that they may have some confusion between the 501(c)(3) versus the nonprofit status from the IRS, which does take a long time. But there's no reason the 501(c)(3) shouldn't have already been, couldn't have already been formed, and money being garnered. And so, I think that that's what I've heard from several of you, as, you know, when are we gonna have some evidence that this is actually a viable direction?
I agree 100%, Mayor. You know me, I've said all along that we need to give them a little bit of time, and we've given them a lot of time. But I don't mind hearing from the nonprofit folks that are wanting to do it. She says she had a notice of intent or something she wanted to share with us, and I'm willing to listen to it if she wants to share it.
So, with the approval of this council, is it okay for the representatives from Randy's Record Shop Foundation to come forward? Everybody go okay with that? Okay, we're fine. Please come forward. No, sorry.
Sorry, a little shorter. We've actually filed for the 501(c)(3). So, I'm sorry if I misconstrued that earlier. That has been filed for, it's been about a month. And what I got from the IRS, it could take upwards of 180 days.
Okay, that should be for the nonprofit status, but the.
No, we are nonprofit.
The charter through the state, the 501(c)(3) should already be established before you file with the.
Is the corporation established?
Yes, the corporation was established last November. Phillips and Ingram handled that for us. This is actually the 501(c)(3).
It's the nonprofit status?
Correct, correct. Yes, I just wanted to clarify that, that has been filed.
That's helpful to know.
You noticed that you had something you wanted to say earlier?
Yes, sorry, I didn't know the protocol. No, I was just asking if we, you know, had letters of intent with that sway, your decision tonight. And like I said, the 501(c)(3) has been an obstacle for us. Most people have really wanted that in place, even though it would be retroactive back until when we started the corporation, which was in November. And plus, just the change in ownership. You know, when we started this, well, when Dad started it, you know, there were different owners at the time. We had to go through the auction, the sale. You know, so we've had some challenges with that. And I know you've given us plenty of time, and we certainly appreciate that. But this project is not an easy project.
Have you all raised any money to do this project?
Pardon me?
Have you all been able to raise any money to do this project?
Yes, we have raised some money. Not what I need, I'll be honest with you. It's not what I need.
Are you anywhere close to what you need?
No, sir. We are not. But that's where the 501(c)(3) to get the big dollars. I mean, I do have a gentleman that actually had a close relationship with Randy. He's on the board with Columbia Records. He's an older gentleman. And I tried to get a commitment from him, everything. You know, he's like, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do. But he wants that 501(c)(3).
You mentioned letters of intent. Is there any way that you, I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. Could you come back in two weeks with letters of intent that showed some dollar figures that could help this council feel like there's a chance?
We can certainly do that, if you would give us, you know, I also want to address the whole asbestos, because I was not aware of that. Did not know that the building had asbestos. Send the report and that sort of thing. So, I don't know if there's a way if I could get a copy of that, or just have that information?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Mayor, I'm willing, and I was the one that made the motion, send this on to council tonight. I'm willing to give them two weeks to bring us some real hard evidence, and letters of intent with amounts, everything else that they're gonna take, and a plan, not only amounts. We need to know what it's gonna take to do this, and there's gotta be a plan forward to do it. So, if they want to take on the task of presenting a plan to us on what they're gonna do, and how much it's gonna take to do it, and letters of intent to cover that, and they want to bring back to us in a couple of weeks, I'm willing to give them two weeks to do it.
And you may want to have a conversation with the property owner, because the remediation of the asbestos is going to kind of, and it may change.
Exactly.
Your ideas.
It may, it may. And, you know, we had preliminary costs to actually to shore up that building. We had contacted a company in Nashville called Wasco that actually does renovations for masonry-type buildings. So, we had that, but obviously, the building has deteriorated, I think, a little bit more, you know, since then. So, we do have that, and we do have a plan as far as, you know, what we want to do. Nothing official.
And I think I told you before, and I talked to you earlier, but nobody on this council wants to tear that building down, okay? But, you know, we've just got to do something.
I understand.
We've put this off a long time. But I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to make a motion that we defer this for two weeks, or extend it for two weeks, should I say. But at that two weeks' meeting, we've got to have some hard evidence, okay? Some letters of intent, some, some hard numbers, and hard figures, okay?
One other question I have, if, I know, understand your main concern is probably safety of the structure. So, if that building was shored up, if we got that structure secure?
I'm more, I'm concerned about that, but in two weeks, I don't think, I hope that it ain't gonna fall in two weeks, okay?
Right.
But in two weeks, before I tell you, yes, go out and spend more money on it, no, I'm not gonna tell you to do that. I'm more interested now if this is a viable plan.
Right.
And it's not a viable plan unless we have some real facts.
Right, I understand.
So, if you come back in two weeks with some real facts, then yes, we're probably gonna ask you to shore that building up, okay? But right now, I'm more concerned about giving us some real facts on it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Overton, is that a motion? Motion by Councilman Overton.
Second.
Second by Councilman Fennell. Mr. Griffin, did you have a comment before we vote?
Again, yeah. Our intentions are on this building, it was added on to. Our original intention was to tear the added-on part down anyway, which will get it away from the flood plain, and to demolish the tattoo parlor and the others. I think if we could go in there now, and people could see, the local people here, that we are starting to try to restore Randy's, I think we would have a lot of local donations. People go by there now, and they don't see any progress. We work every day on this. I mean, it doesn't look like it, but we do. And as long as it looks the same, people think they're not doing anything. We're doing everything we can do.
Well, I'm not a, I'm not our building official. He's standing right behind you. And I promise you, our building official not gonna let you go in that building till it's safe to go in that building.
Well, right.
And give you a permit to do it.
So, we'd have to have a, what about to tear down the, like, the tattoo parlor and all that?
You gotta have an asbestos survey done, and then we'll permit.
Well, that goes back to the owner.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like there needs to be some conversations between the organization and the owners. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further, are there any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, I got a question.
So, this is between the council, but thank you. And they are representatives of the organization, that's why we invited them forward. Thank you. Any further discussion here? Okay, all in favor of extending two weeks, please say aye. Opposed, say no. And so, it passes six to one. Councilman, am I correct?
Five to one, because there was an abstention, I think.
Oh, yes, Mr. Fan was abstaining, thank you. So, Ms. Kip, will that be five to one? Councilman Alexander voting no, and Councilman Fan abstaining. Very good, thank you all. And that concludes our regular agenda this evening. Mr. Stewart has one more thing to say.
With, if I could indulge you in one more little conversation here, being there on dangerous buildings, it's, I know we're going into other business, but we had two other buildings that did not get on the agenda tonight.
Yes, so this, that's what we're planning to do under other business. So, I'm saying that we're wrapping up the regular agenda, we're moving to other business, and we're starting with Mr. Stewart. Proceed.
We had, we have a home on Blue Place, or actually, the address is 361 St. Luke that we brought to you. We're thinking that this is going to tax sale in August. So, what we're gonna, we're gonna ask to do is move this, this building out, and see if it does get a tax sale. It's not a, I don't think it's any problem of it falling to the ground, but it's in really bad shape. And we've been unable to locate owners. It's in air property and.
We have, we actually have the owners on this one. One of the owners is in bankruptcy, represented by an attorney. They have turned this over to Sumner County to sell at the tax sale. And the date, tentatively, is August 7th.
So, if you allow us to move that one, give me the authority to do that, we'll bring it back to you after we find out about a tax sale.
Do you need a resolution or something?
No, we just need a motion.
Make a motion, let it move to August 7?
Till after the tax sale?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Hayes. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, that one moves till after the tax sale in August.
Okay, I have another one at 410 Pace Street, and the owner's here tonight, Mr. Malone. And we may have had a little confusion, in fact, to go on with this 410 Pace. So, what I'm asking to do is, I would like to give Mr. Malone two weeks to get his plan in place, his, get his permit in hand. And then, we would give him a projected start date of 30 days to start reconstruction of that structure, when the date, we get a permit in his hand. You know, we've been way behind in the permit department. I know you've all had phone calls. We've had 130 permits the last two days, so we're about to catch back up.
Impressive, congratulations.
So, we'll get them turned around.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Alexander to allow Mr. Malone to have two weeks to present his plan, and then 30 days to begin work on the project. Is that correct? Second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. Any other items under other business to come forward this evening from this council? Anyone? All right. Moving now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that people may come forward to address an item that was not on the evening's agenda. So, public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open, and you may come forward.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Patrick Reeners, and what wasn't on the city agenda was the fact that there was a party today to celebrate Gallatin, and the growth of Gallatin. Well, Randy's Record Shop is the growth of Gallatin. Vinyl's coming back. I know some record labels, and I didn't talk to this guy back here. And I'm gonna try to see what we can do to bring back the record label. Maybe we get D-Day Jazzy Jeff or some other people to bring back the charisma of the Gallatin, because that's what it's all about. I moved here in 98. I ain't got no trouble till I chalked on the sidewalk, just the truth. So, besides that, I want to say that I want to thank y'all for giving Randy's Record Place another chance. But what do we do about the other seven, 10,000 homes in this town that are built from asbestos that could be destroyed from a tornado? We're not gonna mess with them. So, we need to work with Randy's Record Shop, because vinyl's coming back. That's what we need in this town. We need a new vibe. We need a new love. It's all about love, remember. Love is the most powerful energy. Have a good night.
Hey, Patrick, I thought I seen you in a pink bunny outfit the other day. Was that you?
I don't answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reeners. Anyone else wishing to speak, you may come forward at this time.
My name is Frank Marchesi, M-A-R-C-H-E-S-E, 589 Harris Lane. I'm coming tonight to voice my concern about the island that was installed at the end of Harris Lane on Long Hollow. You can only make a right off of Harris Lane onto Long Hollow. That right is extremely narrow. It's very hard for trucks to navigate through there. I did bring some pictures. You see tire tracks going over the island where people just drive over it. It just seems like they, they took the island and put it there. They didn't re-stripe the road. There's no, the road actually goes right against the guardrail, against the crick. So, it is pretty dangerous. I've had several delivery people tell me that they cannot exit that way. They have to go out to Greenlee and go around. I just wanted to voice my concern over the island.
May I ask you, we spoke earlier this evening, did you have an opportunity to speak with engineering about that?
Yes, I did. I did. And he is, I believe, he said he's speaking to the state or the county. But I just wanted to voice.
Well, we appreciate that, bringing it to our attention. And Mr. Tuttle will follow up on that. And did you leave contact information? The meeting's almost over. Would you make sure?
I left it with several people, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I did have one other question. I know that there's a lot of blasting going on, especially at the end of Harris Lane on Greenlee. And I assume that's permitted by the town? I don't know, I don't know the mechanics behind permitting blasting.
Yeah, Chief Williams, the fire department issues blasting permits? The state and the city? You'd have to give them through both? Okay.
I'm just curious, who's responsible for possible damage to your home due to blasting down the street? Is that the contractor? I don't expect an answer like from you right now. I just, I'm just not sure who I should turn to.
Right. Chief Williams can help you with any questions you may have, and.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related? Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items this evening? If there is, they may come forward.
Hello, my name is Keisha Brinkley, and last Friday, some of the male police officers came to my home.
I'm sorry, wait, I can't hear you, tell, your name and your address, first, please.
My name is Keisha Brinkley, I live at 363 Paradise Street, and some of your officers, the Gallatin Police Department, came to my residence last Friday, and they messed up my shoulder, and I just want to know whether the city be responsible for my medical expenses.
I would, Ms. Heimacalli, how do you think that we should answer that? Yeah, we can't give our legal advice, if you have an issue, I would certainly follow up with our Gallatin Police Department, and then you may with our legal department as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Okay, I will declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed, and with that, we'll entertain a motion. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander, all in favor, say aye. We're adjourned, everybody have a lovely evening, thanks again for coming out for the planned Gallatin lawn party, we look forward to seeing you again. Be safe going home.